All right. Good morning. We'll call a September 13th Board meeting to order. Roll call would indicate all commissioners are present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone should have the agenda in front of you. Can we get a motion to approve today's agenda?
Some of it.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Clark.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Persky. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, saying five is saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, our next item is going to be our Stearns County Virtual Years of Service Program. Today we begin recognize our employees who are celebrating their work anniversaries with the county. There are seventy-one employees with anniversaries from January to June of 2022. Combined, these employees have nine hundred and seventy-five years of dedicated county service. Mike, if you want to take it from there.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everybody. Today is a special day. It's just because it gives us an opportunity to celebrate those who have committed their careers to the people of the county. And as we all know, Stearns County is full of dedicated, hardworking employees who live up our values of professional, approachable, responsive, collaborative, and fair and equitable every day as they provide vital services to the people of the county. And so we're going to take a few minutes here to honor and recognize those who have hit their milestone years in their careers here at Stearns County. And we're going to do that with a few minutes of a PowerPoint presentation. So if we can pay attention to that, that would be great.
Very good.
So a special thank you to those employees that are hitting those milestones, but also to all employees who exemplify our mission to provide exceptional public services. Really, the hard work, your creativity, and your dedication really goes not unnoticed, it goes noticed. And so on behalf of myself and the county board, we appreciate you and the work you do in serving the residents of Stearns County. Thanks.
Yeah, and a lot of those are great milestones. Thirty-five years, that's, you know, even over twenty is truly amazing. But, and yeah, personally, I'd like to thank a lot of them as well because dealt with a lot of them, and there's a lot of them behind the scenes too that we never get to really see that do a lot of the work as well. So thank you to everyone for that. Anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Chair, you're so right. I mean, and some of those, I was just leaning over to Commissioner Persky saying, at least a few of them look like they must have been teenagers when they started with us. Just thinking about the expertise and then some of those folks too who, I think there are, sometimes people think that people who have worked for a place for a long time don't bring innovation and creativity to the job anymore, and that's incorrect. Looking at each of those faces, thinking about how they're helping us do better and meet the needs of our residents is pretty amazing.
Yeah, truly. Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, you know I'm going to speak.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, also just the service that they provide. Some of them have just done exceptional service over the years. And, you know, they get compensated with a paycheck, but they go up above and beyond what that paycheck is. And we get a good number of compliments about the service they provide, so appreciate it.
Very true. All right, our next item is the Public Access Forum. Anyone wishing to address the board on issues not found on today's agenda may do so at this time, either by attending the meeting in person or joining virtually. To join virtually, call three two zero six five six three six oh two or email info@co.stearns.mn.us by noon on Monday preceding the meeting. Individuals commenting are limited to three to four minutes. County board will not engage in dialogue with the speakers, rather refer the matter to appropriate county department. A citizen may speak at the Public Access Forum only once per month. Is there anyone here wishing to speak at today's Public Access Forum? If so, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Good morning. I'm Sandy Clocker, Avon, Collegeville. I've asked you many times how many signatures we need on the petition for election integrity for a fair election. I have one hundred and thirty-eight signatures in my hand. I will get more. I would like you to start communicating with us and talking about this issue. These constituents have put their name, their year of birth, their signature, their residence, and they are all from Stearns County. These people, your constituents, and we would like one day, same day voting, absentee voting for military only. All voters vote in the precinct of where they live, students included, which I really haven't got an answer to where they really live. Only paper ballots and all ballots to be hand counted. No vouching for another voter. Only pre-registered voters verifying proof of citizenship. All voters present a valid, unexpired Minnesota driver's license or Minnesota ID card. The license card must have a picture. The second item you were handed this morning, and I sent an email to you all yesterday, a copy of the letter with the potential litigation with you and the current case that is in the courts that would require you to hold on to all materials post 2019. I understand that nothing at this time has been destroyed. I hope that's true. But I highly suggest that you look at the attached affidavits in this case. There is unrefutable evidence of what and how things happened, and we will seek further remedies if needed. The Help America Vote Act made things very clear on how elections were to be handled, and they were not held with accredited machines in 2020. Please review the case and the affidavits. And if you have any further information, we'd appreciate you do your part to ensure this evidence is not destroyed until all issues have been resolved. Thank you for standing with us, the residents of Stearns County.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at today's Public Access Forum? Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else. Our next item is the Consent Agenda. Everyone should have it in front of you. There are seventeen items on there. Can I get a motion to approve the consent?
I have just two clarifications, if I could get them. Items number two and three and seven and eight, if you could pull them, then you could go ahead with the motion.
Okay, do you want to approve the consent agenda with those four?
I'll move it.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda pulling two, three, and seven and eight for further discussion? Saying five is saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right.
Can I get a clarification between, what's the difference between two and three? Except three seems to be a line longer.
I think they're co-sponsoring that event at Revs.
Because it looks virtually the same. Did it really need, does this mean it had two applications?
Yeah, Albany Lions and Avon Lions.
Okay.
From my understanding and discussions with them, they're two different Lions organizations sponsoring the same
All right.
same events.
Oh, okay.
Sort of kind of co-sponsoring, I believe, the same event. Is that right? Yep.
Okay. The, that's fine. And then seven and eight is approving a sheriff's office budget for squad cars. This has been some time ago, but when we were having the discussion on this, on squad cars, we were told that there were merits to leasing and there were merits to purchasing. And both, the merits of both options were worthy. So at that time, we had a practice of leasing half the cars and buying half the cars. And we haven't visited this forever. How we do that now?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that is exactly what staff did in the last few months and came to the conclusions that we have here, is that we'll move a little more towards outright purchasing rather than leasing. And I don't know, Sarah is here, if we need her to speak to that. But the lease option seems less attractive to us now, and outright purchasing seems to work out better. If you want more details than that, we can certainly provide that. And what's on this agenda is, one, an adjustment to this year's budget so we can make some purchases and actually purchase out some of those that are leased. And then, and the next item is, is to allow us to order vehicles that we wouldn't purchase until the 2023 budget in place. But if we don't make that order now, we will be unlikely able to get those vehicles in 23.
Is that what you're talking about?
What's that?
Supply chain stuff?
Yes. Yeah, that's why we need to make sure we get the squads ordered for next year, ordered now.
I know, I've listened to at least one dealer express frustration at inability to get vehicles, so it isn't just us.
No, it's everywhere.
Yeah. All righty, well, good explanation. I'll go with it. Thank you. We can, I don't have any problem approving two and three and seven and eight. I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Lenzmeyer, a second from Commissioner Mergan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, saying five is saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, with that, we'll recess our regular meeting and open the Human Services Board meeting. Morning, Melissa.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Melissa Huberty. I'm the Human Services Administrator. I have two items on our agenda today. One is E1 on page sixty-one. It's just claims paid on behalf of human services clients. The second item is F1 on page sixty-three. And we're going to do a short presentation PowerPoint. I have Julie Ellis, who's the Director of Adult and Disability Services in the Human Services Department, and Nick Henderson, who's the Family and Children's Director in the Human Services Department. We're going to do a short presentation to discuss some department, state Department of Revenue funding that Stearns County received, is going to receive, and will receive it for the next six years. And we want to talk about a proposal of what we would like to do with the funding. And this is funding that we did not apply for, if you want to hit the PowerPoint. But in, we worked on the legislation in the last year to help with homeless, local homeless prevention aid. And a number of counties are receiving this funding. And we were notified that Stearns County was awarded for this next year eight hundred and forty, over eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And we are told that we will receive that every single year for six years. We do know that this is state funding and that we know how that works after some period of time. I believe we are told that there's a reevaluation of the funding on the third year, so we don't know if that'll go up or down. But what we'd like to do for the next few years is, or asking for board support to add two FTEs to work on the home team, but also to specifically work on a new juvenile community action team that we're proposing that we are already putting together. And so I'm going to have both Nick and Julie come up and talk about what our proposal is, and then we'll be available for questions, so.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Julie Ellis. I'm the Director of Adult and Disability Services with Stearns County Human Services. The issue of families and children experiencing homelessness in our county is real and is increasing. One of the several emergency shelters in our county Place of Hope reported approximately forty children at the Place of Hope Shelter approximately six weeks ago. That number now has increased to fifty-nine children. The poverty rates in many of our schools are extremely high, over ninety percent. Because of this, our county is receiving the fifth largest allocation in the state from this fund to assist these families and also to prevent additional families from becoming homeless. If you could advance the slide, Nick, thank you. As you may recall, the past five years, we've been working with our community partners to serve adults who are utilizers of high-end services such as detox, jail, and emergency rooms and not receiving appropriate services. We've worked together to find new solutions for these individuals and have had great success. The average cost savings in county levy dollars for each of these individuals was approximately a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars a year. We continue to work with our partners such as Centricare, mental health center, and law enforcement as we work in more of a prevention stage now. I'm going to invite Nick to tell us about the recent effort to serve children in a similar way.
Thank you, Julie. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Nick Henderson, Stearns County Human Services Director, Family and Children's Division. In 2018, Stearns County Human Services, in conjunction and partnership with our community partners, created the Community Action Team. This team has been highly effective in having a positive impact and outcomes for our high utilizers of services. When this work began, it was very reactive to an issue and quickly became proactive in identifying those clients and ensuring they received appropriate services to stop the revolving door. Stearns County and the state of Minnesota are experiencing high acuity juvenile cases at an unprecedented rate. High acuity cases are complex cases which involve complex mental health and behavioral health issues impacting the services available to these children. Not only are these cases increasing, the beds and services are at an all-time premium. In May of this year, we called upon our collaborative partners to meet and discuss this crisis. This group of leaders reflected on the work previously done and agreed that we have the ability and the decision makers to get out in front of the state and begin combating this crisis. Out of this, we have committed to making a difference and bringing together the supervisors, frontline staff, and decision makers to form the Juvenile Community Action Team. Last week alone, Stearns County Human Services had twelve youth who came into the care of the county for a period of time due to limited placement availability. When I speak to that, I mean that these are children that are coming into the county building, and Stearns County Human Services staff are providing 24-hour care. Of these children, several were cases where the families were overwhelmed and didn't have the resources for the children to remain in the home. Between September 2021 and September 2022, Stearns County Human Services has sheltered over thirty youth in the county administration building. Some of these youth were sheltered for a week plus at a time. And during this time, again, our staff provided 24-hour care, provided meals, and made referrals for youth. When we talk about the youth and making referrals, we are talking about some of these youth, we have made referrals to over a hundred and fifty facilities from ocean to ocean and border to border, only to be declined. We also have hospitals locally and across the state that are boarding children in their emergency departments, their hallways, and ambulance bays as no placements are available. We recently had a ten-year-old who was stuck in the emergency department in the Twin Cities for sixty-two days, and another seven-year-old who was stuck at Children's for thirty-two days. We are experiencing placements disrupt at an alarming rate, foster providers walking away from years and, after years in the business, and facilities shutting down and not being able to operate at their capacity due to short staffing. When times get tough, many times fingers get pointed at who is to blame. This crisis, Stearns County Human Services and its partners stand lockstep to make a difference. We all recognize that these children are not just human services children, law enforcement's issue, corrections problem, the hospital's issues, or our mental health providers' issues. These are our children, and we have hope that we can have, that we can positively impact them and their families through this collaborative work. Through this collaborative work, we hope to Through this collaborative work, we hope to have an effort where we'll be able to proactively work with the families, provide them the resources expeditiously, and keep the children in the home and connected to their families and not overutilize our services. We are making a request for two staff that will be utilized to combat this crisis and work collaboratively with our partners and the families to support them proactively. The workers will be intensively involved early on and prior to the moments that the families and foster parents and kinship providers can no longer provide care to their children, or they disrupt from placement. It is also important to keep in mind that many of the families we serve lose housing due to their children, due to their child's behaviors, and this will support them. In the end, the county will see a reduction in out-of-home placement costs across human services. We will also support families proactively to continue to keep the children in their home.
So, um, we're aware that this is not just a statewide problem, this is a nationwide problem, and one of the things that we would like to do is to not wait for the state to bail us out of this problem. We can't wait months for this. So, when the Department of Revenue funding, we were informed that it was coming to us, whether we like it or not, um, we thought, we've got to get on top of this proactively, like we often do in the Human Services Department, where we're trying to be more innovative and progressive and get to the point where we're actually trying to do transformational change. Because like Nick said, we had 12 children in our building we were babysitting this week. And this is a crisis that has gotten worse since, like, through COVID. Like, this is a new, um, issue over the last couple of years, where there's a significant crisis going on nationwide, actually, and statewide. So, um, we thought this is maybe an opportunity to try to get on top of it quicker and not just wait for this. So, and we do think that, um, forming a juvenile community action team is actually going to not only be better for the trauma in the community and getting on top of this issue and helping to house children, um, but also, we think it actually, in the long run, is going to do what the Community Action Team did, and that is to save taxpayer dollars in the, um, in the budget for out-of-home placements. So that's what we're hoping. I do know, I am very familiar with state funding and how it works, and so if at the sixth year, they say, "Well, thank you for doing all this great work, but we're not giving you any more funding," I think that's the point at which we then have to address. Are we going to go down FTE-wise by attrition? Are we going to reevaluate our priorities in six years from now? And, and that we do anyway. So, um, that would be the request we have, if we can add, um, use this funding for that purpose. In addition to FTEs, it's a significant amount of money yearly, like, it's $841,000 every year. It, um, will come in, um, in the middle of next year, but we can start spending it now, and we didn't want to wait while we have all these kids sitting, sitting where they're sitting. Um, so, um, we're requesting that, but in addition to it, we can also use it for all, like, other homeless prevention, like, activities, like first-to-last-months' rent, damage deposits, utility payments, and case management services, so. With that, we are available for questions.
So then, Melissa, the, the goal is to create this J-CAT team and have these two participate with that, creating that entity?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, you are correct. That's exactly what we'd like to do. And we had been in the formation stages of trying to figure this out, and then the revenue came in. It was sort of like, uh, a beautiful thing happened all at once, I guess.
So actually, parents, I mean, just drop their children off because they just can't take care of them?
Correct. That's a new thing, um, kind of newish. I mean, it's happened before, but not at this rate, where, um, people are saying they can't take it anymore, and they're just dropping their kids off and saying they don't care if their rights are terminated. So what we did before isn't working, where you maybe tell parents, "You can't," you know, "We may, you know, terminate your rights if you do this." No, I mean, parents are at their wits' ends, and it's, um, you know, a very sad statement where, I guess, where we're at.
You talked seven-year-olds already, that's, that's young, holy smokes.
Yes, and, um, we, we aim to try not to be babysitting children in the administration center, and that's been a very difficult thing, as the safety net services in the county, where we're, whoever's left at the very end of the line, and which tended, oops, sorry, happens to be Nick Henderson's team, who's done a phenomenal job. I mean, Family and Children's has been incredible with the work that they have been doing this last year. But we all know, that isn't ideal. We don't want social workers in the building babysitting kids. They need to be with their families, and we need to put those services in place. So that's what we would like to leverage this funding to help with that.
Yeah, and then the bigger issue still is, where, where do people go?
Correct.
Where?
Correct.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. I'll make a motion at the end of this. I do have a question, and then just, um, for the board, you might remember, this is actually one of those issues that was worked on through MICA this last year, and, um, bipartisanly, really appreciated the work that was done. This money could have all, at one point, it looked like it could have just gotten to the metro area, and it might have not even been for, um, some of the needs we have. So by the end of it, what, what was done really ought to be able to help us address, hopefully, in some ways, this really big issue, um, in a more creative way, and then reminding them that, yes, we've got this, these challenges in greater Minnesota. I'm wondering, I mean, out-of-home placements, as we all know, has been one of the biggest cross-drivers in our county. And, and hearing you, uh, say that the hope with this, and you're going to, I'm sure will come back with us with data about it, we'll, we'll start to ameliorate some of that if need be. Could these funds be used for out-of-home placements in some situations to stabilize somebody, or is it really meant as the family as a whole?
Um, it's my understanding that this is actually local homeless prevention aids, so we're going to really gear it towards those activities. But what we learned with the Community Action Team is, the very beginning of the Community Action Team, over 90% of the high utilizers had home, had housing issues. We, we know that that's probably the case in this situation too, so we want to leverage those dollars to get on top of it and do prevention.
It sounds like they may have some childcare or other support issues.
Oh, yes.
And mental health related, okay. And others may have questions, but I'll just put it on the table, moving to, to support this, approve this agenda item.
I'm a MICA county's analyst. I mean, have, have you had that conversation? Is everybody doing it different?
Um, and actually, I mean, maybe Julie has more information than I do, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Lenzmeyer, um, we, there's a lot of discussion on the high-acuity juveniles right now, and it has been for some time, and I'm not aware personally of any county having figured out any innovative solution. We're just floundering, um, and we don't want to flounder anymore. Like, I can see it boots on the ground, what's happening in our building every day, every week, when I'm being told we have social workers babysitting kids in our building. That's ridiculous, and that's why we want to get on top of this now. But Julie, actually, you may have more information about what the other counties are doing.
Yeah, this is all new, brand new. You're hearing it today. I think one of our, our ideas is one of the most innovative ideas. I have not heard of another county that is trying anything like this. Uh, the beauty of this aid is that it's very broad in what it can be used for, so we can define what our need is locally, and it's different in Hennepin County than it is in Stearns. But one thing we know is the same, is the emergency room issue. Having kids stuck in an emergency room for 60-some days is so traumatic and damaging to them, um, we really need to attend to that first. There have been a couple of groups that have been meeting through MICA, um, with, uh, the governor's office, um, as well as, um, just a couple of counties actually have been there, but the hospitals are very interested in that conversation, and how do we fix this issue? Um, there, there is a lack of beds, we know that, um, and that's the path, I think, that those two, um, groups are kind of going down, is that we need to increase beds. But as we all know, with the worker shortage, um, just because you have another bed doesn't mean you can staff it. Um, so a lot of the hospitals do have the beds, they just don't have the staffing to actually have people there to care for these kids. So I think there are going to be multiple solutions, um, and money will help for it, but money's not the only thing that we need. We need creative ideas, and that's why I think the J-CAT idea is just beautiful, because people from Centricare, people from Mental Health Center will have different ideas than what we've been trying. We're certain of that. Thank you.
Before I go to Commissioner Persky, so, are these children able to go to school somewhere, or basically, if they end up here the whole day and?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the children, if they, when they come into our care, we do try to keep them connected to their schools, connected to all of their resources during that time. Uh, if it was a child from the northern part of the county, we would transport them daily to and from school to ensure that they're continuing their education activities.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Persky.
Yeah, that, that's touching on a couple of my questions. And the first one is, then how many are involved perhaps with 742? Do you know how many are in the St. Cloud district? Don't get, just a, a percent, rough percentage, I don't need a head count.
Mr. Persky, members of the board, um, I would say it is about 50% at minimum that are involved locally within our 742 district.
And then what about the metro area, which would include Sock Rapids, Artell, uh, those schools?
Mr. Persky, members of the board, we would be probably going up into the 80, 85 percentile at that point.
Okay. And then, uh, this is a boundary, a social issue that does not recognize county boundaries. And so what about, you know, East St. Cloud, Sock Rapids, being in Benton County and Sherburne County? How do we share that issue and meet those needs? And what's the concern with the, what they have going on, on the other side of the water?
Thank you, Commissioner Persky, members of the board. I'll try not to be too selfish in my answer. Uh, the reason our allocation is so high is because of the extreme poverty level in the school district in our county. Um, so we did make a decision to move forward with our own plan for now. We are having conversations with the other area counties, and at some point, you know, we might collaborate more with them, um, but we felt the sense of urgency to keep this money within Stearns County to help families at least for the first couple of years, and we'll continue those conversations.
Yeah, well, I would think that if a person's coming in homeless, they have no residence.
Exactly. That's the tricky part about serving people experiencing homelessness. It always is. Those conversations are very difficult, um, and I think we have a, a good collaborative relationship. All the counties have an outreach worker now in the adult world, um, so that's helpful. Wright, Sherburne, Benton, and Stearns all have outreach workers. Um, I don't know that their allocations are high enough that they would be making a, a request as we are today, um, because I, looking at the numbers, it, I don't think it would cover an FTE. Um, so this would be unique to Stearns County to actually have two workers devoted to this work.
And then, Commissioner Clark, you made that motion? Then I will go ahead and second a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion?
Yeah, what about, what about the other counties like Meeker and Morrison and Todd? How's this relate to those?
Um, every, I believe every county got an allocation, a minimum allocation. I didn't look at theirs specifically, although I can send you what the state's allocation were for each county. I'm not sure they got very much money either.
But have you had collaboration with them at all, or?
I don't, I don't know, actually, if we've done with those long farther away ones, or like Meeker.
No, it's, it's difficult, other than, you know, at our full MACSA membership, we'll be having this conversation, but like I said, this, the announcement of the, um, the aid of malice was just made, so, um, I haven't even actually looked. I think that each county is going to receive at least $5,000, um, if I, if that's correct. And they could use that for first-months' rent, damage deposits, you know, it, it won't be as broad of a scale, um, and it is really linked to the poverty rates in your school system.
In your county.
In your county, as well as your per capita.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and then I believe we'll probably need a motion on the consent agenda item yet?
It's disinformation.
Oh, that's disinformation, okay.
I had to look at that too, Mr. Chair. We do?
Okay, okay. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Clark for the consent agenda item. A second by Commissioner Lenzmeyer, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. With that, we will adjourn our Human Services Board meeting and reconvene our regular board meeting. Um, I don't think we need a break at this point, do we? So we'll go right to the Auditor of Treasure, if that works, Randy?
So, um, I believe Janet will be bringing up the PowerPoint. So this is a continuation of the information and education on the election. Uh, so with me today is Laura Lowenbach, the Election and Service Center Director, and Roxanne Gaird, the Election Supervisor. And with that, there we go. So, uh, what has been brought up in the past is who's all involved in elections. So there's over 75 municipal clerks that are involved. Those are your city, township, school district clerks, all have a role, and we'll go into the detail of what, um, each one does in a minute here. Election judges, we did over 1,400, um, trainings in multiple areas, so some of these are, I guess, repeats. There's about 800 to 900 actual election judges, but some get trained in multiple areas. And county staff, uh, between temps and auditor's office, and a number of departments that are, that help and are very helpful. We couldn't do it without them. So it's a very big effort by a lot of people, so, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Laura, and she'll go into some details.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, um, the involvement of the county staff with elections, so this is a pretty extensive team. We, of course, have our election staff, and then we hire some temporary election staff that work through the entire election process, um, for all 46 days of both the primary and the general. Uh, some of the roles that we're responsible for the county, first and foremost, we follow Minnesota statutes, the federal policies, and, uh, Minnesota rules and, uh, on how the processes are conducted. We take the campaign filings and, uh, file the campaign finance reports. We have to maintain the voter registration in SVRS. We train all of the municipal clerks and the election judges, so what Randy was saying with all the 75 clerks and over 900 judges, um, we are responsible for training them. We conduct the absentee balloting. We prepare ballots, which includes like proofing your spelling, uh, school district questions all the way down to a comma or a period. Um, we test all of the programming. We maintain the election equipment and certifications that are done by the state of Minnesota. Um, we report election night results. We conduct the post-election review, and then we also assist in, uh, the official state or local recounts. So the municipal clerks, there's approximately 75 of them in Stearns County. Um, they are also going to help, uh, administer their elections in their precinct, so they are going to, uh, prepare the required notices, publications, and postings. They receive the candidate filings for their offices, which could be like a mayor or a school board. Um, they also do their finance reports. They assist Stearns County with the ballot prep, which includes proofing the questions all the way down to the last comma. Um, they conduct the preliminary and public accuracy testing for each municipality. They actually hire and appoint their own certified election judges, so they take that party list and they hire, Stearns County doesn't hire for the cities and townships, they do their own hiring. They are also responsible to follow the state and local election laws, practices, and procedures. So election judges, again, there's over 900 of them in Stearns County. Um, they all have to be trained and certified, which is a two-hour training each election cycle. They are appointed, again, by their jurisdiction or their municipality to serve in the, the voters within the polling place. Um, they assist with the preliminary and public accuracy testing, and then they do, um, assigned roles during the election process on election day or prior to election day. And then lastly, we have the head judges. So the head judge is that lead official in the polling place on election day, that kind of is running the show. Um, they administer the election judge oath to all of the election judges working in their precinct. They oversee the polling place setup, which means they are posting the required, um, postings, like, required postings, making sure that the ADA compliance is there. They address any complaints and challenges in the polling place. Um, they are responsible for balancing the precinct's election day results in, when the polls close. Uh, they record the write-ins. They return, um, all of the election materials back to Stearns County with another election judge, um, and that happens after the polling place closes. Each election judge has to take the oath, so similar, I know we talked about in the last board meeting, voters take an oath, uh, election judges also take an oath that they are going to attest to perform the duties of the election according to the law to prevent fraud, deceives, uh, and abuse in conducting this election. Uh, they perform the duties in a fair and impartial manner and do not attempt to create an advantage for any party or candidate. Election judges need to remain, um, nonpartisan. They can't influence voters at all on election day, so they have to be, uh, when they come into the polling place, their opinions are left at the door, and we want to make sure that we have a fair, um, practice of the election processes. So they have to remain courteous and professional, uh, follow all of the instructions as provided by the head judge. Um, they are also the, kind of the eyes and ears that are happening in the polling place on that day, so they might be the one to fill out an incident log if, um, something happened during the election process. Uh, they have to refrain from any kind of comments, like we talked about, um... They have to refrain from any kind of comments like we talked about. And then basically, at the end of the day, they are providing lawful assistance to any eligible person that needs assistance, but they can't ask somebody if they need assistance. So if somebody approaches them, they can definitely help provide assistance. And then the last bullet point there is to respect the secret ballot and the privacy of the voters.
Right. Good morning, Commissioners. We're going to talk a little bit about the certification and testing of the election equipment. So before being certified for use in Minnesota, all of the voting equipment must be tested and certified by test labs accredited by the U.S. Election Assistance Commission. And it also must undergo detailed additional testing by the Office of the Minnesota Secretary of State. So before we can use any equipment, it does need to be certified and and go through some testing. So when we prepare the ballots, part of part of the process is ballot rotation. So the Secretary of State will determine the base rotation for the partisan offices. And the ballot rotation is part of the initial ballot programming setup. The initial order for base rotation is by lot. And then it will also recognize what precincts are belonging belonging to that race being rotated are identified. The number of rotations are determined by the number of candidates for that race. And then the precincts are arranged according to the number of registered voters. So determining the number of candidates, they use registered voters for those precincts. That is how they go about determining which name is at the top of the ballots for each precinct. When we go into preliminary testing, at the county level, we will test every piece of equipment that the county uses for absentee voting, for mail mail balloting. And before that, so we we test every municipality in Stearns County. So for the general election, there is a good possibility that we will have over 150 different ballot styles. So we test every ballot cell in the county and ballots are marked with the assistive voting devices. That is part of the preliminary testing. So with each test deck that we get, we will take out probably a half a dozen ballots, mark those with the assistive voting device, put those back into our pre-marked test deck, and then run those ballots through through the machine. Once we run the ballots through the machine, we will run a tape and that tape is verified against a spreadsheet and makes we want to make sure that the results are 100% accurate. For the public accuracy test, this must occur within a certain timeframe. It's within 14 days of the election. Notice will be published at least 48 hours before the test and we will publish in the Cole Spring Record and then also put that on our website. The public accuracy test is open to the public and then we will have election judges there with party ballots to assist with the public accuracy test. At this point, we are probably looking at the last week of October. We have not identified a date yet, but that is right right in the timeframe of when we can do a public accuracy test. We take a look at the ballot counter DS 200 results. As Laura mentioned, the head judge at the end of the night, they will post, they are responsible for the precinct results. So once the polls have closed, the vote total tapes are printed at the polling place and then verified by the election judges. At that point, after the tape is run, the results are then modem into the into Stearns County and it is modem with an encrypted file. The original polling place vote results tapes are verified with the modem results to ensure that they are accurate. So on election night, once we get all the municipalities come in with all of their results, we do do a test. We will take the tape the tape from the polling place and we will make sure that that is accurate according to the the results that were modem in and uploaded to the Secretary of State's website. New this year, we do have a Dropbox for voters who wish to drop off their ballot instead of mailing it in. For the primary, we had about 30 ballots in the Dropbox. Now, a voter can only drop off their own ballot or one ballot in in the Dropbox. If they want to drop off for someone else, they need to come inside and we need to log that information. So you can only drop off your own ballot at the Dropbox. This Dropbox is monitored monitored by multiple cameras 24/7. And this Dropbox was 100% funded by a state grant. Some resources that coming up. So we've had a couple of radio shows. We had one yesterday with KNSI. I believe there is another one this afternoon with WJON. To note, absentee voting does begin on Friday, September 23rd. And we do have the two locations. We have the Stearns County Service Center and we also have a location at St. Cloud City Hall that will carry all the ballots.
And then we were on the radio yesterday, Roxanne and myself on KNSI, and we will be on a future one also. They already invited us back. Today, we'll be on WJON, Laura and myself, and then we'll be on CASM at least twice. So we will be out there on a number of occasions. Then we will come back with some more education information, more on the cybersecurity and that, probably the first meeting in October, so.
So just a question. So when like when they send you those, you know, when you test the machines and you you pull six random ballots, you just randomly mark? They don't tell you which ones to mark. You just mark whichever ones and you feed it back in?
We do. We do get a spreadsheet from the vendor that's that will recommend which ballots to pull to use for for testing the assistive voting device. Now, assistive voting device is just a marking piece of equipment. It doesn't tally tally the votes. So once we mark those ballots, we insert them back into the pre-marked test deck. We run those ballots through and then we check that against the tape that we and and the edited spreadsheet spreadsheet that we get from the vendor, so.
But who's ever running it into that machine is just picking random?
We.
Random candidates?
No, we pre we predetermined which ballots we'll pick to use the assistive voting device. So for each municipality, we will probably pull test ballot number three, six, nine, and 21. And so for each municipality, there is test ballots and those are the number of those individual ballots are the ones that we will pull to mark using the assistive voting device. Does that make sense?
But they're already marked.
They are already marked and so we take that.
That was what I was getting at. Were they marked or do you just? Okay, pick this one.
They no, they are already marked and so we take that already pre-marked ballot and then we mark it using the Omni ballot.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Commissioner Persky? I got a couple of questions here. And Randy, we've had 900 judges in working in the head judges as well. And I know the mistakes have been made and we've had some fraud where maybe a felon has voted no and then. But have any of those 900 judges reported any great large amounts of fraud or any great irregularities? Has that happened out of those 900 judges?
And then has the judges?
Yeah, have they reported anything?
Well, on election day, the incident log is for them to report irregularities that we follow up on. So you guys can help me. Any irregularities that we find that we think lead to a crime, we send up to the county attorney's office. So I don't know that they're really reporting any. They're not really in the position to do that. But once we we, you know, find something and we think, for instance, a felon even registering to vote is a crime.
Right.
So those would get sent up to the county attorney's office.
So we are taking care of those.
Yes.
We are.
Okay, but as far as you know, there isn't any large scale?
No.
No? Okay. Yeah. And I and I, again, I appreciate those people out there in the county and many of them have done it for years and have done a quality job and have always been polite and and very, what I want to say, assertive in making sure that things happen appropriately. And then also, are there things that we can't change? A state statute tells us what we can do. So, I mean, our ability to change the process is is not available to us. Is that correct?
That's correct. So for instance, you know, there's always comments on we should require an ID. Well, we can't make that call, right? That's the state statute. That's the law. If you're if you're a registered voter, you get to vote. Now, if you need to register, of course, then you have to provide proper ID. So we don't we don't get to change that and decide what we want to do.
Okay. And then lastly, was there any candidate at all that complained about the process this past election?
No, there has not.
Okay.
Commissioner Mergen?
I was just wondering, Randy, when does a felon ever become eligible to vote again?
Well, you have to, you know, serve your whole term, including probation. And I will have to say, it is a confusing thing and community corrections has helped us immensely in that area. So we do try to get the word out to those felons if their voting rights have been restored or not. But it's not really so simple because sentences get stayed and different things like that. So we've asked for community corrections to help and they have, and that's really helped a lot, so.
So they can, after some point, become eligible again?
Yes, they can after some point.
Okay.
And maybe just one other question. So do you get a few incident log reports each election cycle?
Yeah, we're asking them to, if in doubt, put it on the log. We want to know about it. It helps for training. It helps for us to give them instructions and everything else. So yes, if in doubt, put it on the log. We're expecting that.
Commissioner Mergen?
Just I happen to know a felon, I think it's 20 years ago, something, but he's under the impression that he never gets to vote again.
Oh, that is incorrect, right?
Yeah. So what what would be his procedure just to get a hold of you or?
Well, you could certainly call our office or or community corrections.
Correct.
And we can look that up and try to help them find the right answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no more questions for Randy. Commissioner Lenzemeyer?
And the this just showed up at 8:15 this morning. It's an email from someone named Jessica Black and Jessica is with the Election Integrity Group of Central Minnesota Freedom Associates. And what it is, is about two and a half pages of recent responses from Sherburne County on the same topic. I printed it out and I didn't get the whole print, so I won't go through it in detail. But the good news is there's, you know, it's an electronic file and it merits consideration along with the homework that our folks have done. And there's a variety of folks that are working on this stuff. The real aspect that I'm discovering is that it isn't so much that we don't, we haven't been covering this process in detail. What is pretty obvious to me is we haven't, we have fallen down on what I would call the marketing end of things and meaning we haven't explained this, our perspective to the public. And this is, in the long run, we'll be glad we went through all of this, even though it's painful. But we need to get this information out there. It's critical that folks appreciate the more details on the election process. So it's coming around, not fast enough, but then this came upon us fairly quickly and we're making progress. So I'm not going to dislocate my shoulder patting ourselves on the back, but yeah, this I think we'll look back at this time period that the process is valued. The the book is written by Eric Von Michelins. He did a presentation several weeks ago in St. Joe. It covers a ton of detail on the process. It isn't that I significantly disagree with his conclusions. It's just that we haven't done the best job of getting those results out, so we're working our way through it.
Commissioner Mergen?
I'm coming about the same email that Commissioner Lenzemeyer is talking about. It says it's from Sherburne County, but then question number one is, does Benton County have drop boxes? So I'm a little confused as which one they're talking about here. And Benton County says no according to this, but I'm not sure.
I think they're sending it to multiple counties and they left the answers in there in case we just want to have the same answer. I think it was a courtesy thing, but we'll we'll look at that email and respond.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Commissioner?
Just a final thing. Again, I appreciate everybody's efforts. Randy, your department doing such such a good job and and also the fact that we're going to want to encourage as many people as can vote to vote. And we're not going to try to stop people from voting or discourage them from voting because they have that right as an American and a resident, so.
I think this is just a good update for all of us. I mean, that don't have a lot of knowledge in doing this procedure, so thank you for that.
And Mr. Sherry, along with that, the more that we're able to answer the questions in a confident way when people are asking us, the better. So you're you're all helping us as well as our broader public really makes a big difference. So thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we go on, why don't we take a five-minute break? Before we go on, why don't we take a five-minute break? I'd like, like to call the meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is H1, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three items in the administration, under administration today. And the first is to set a special meeting to consider vacation rental ordinance changes. And you held a discussion a while ago, and after that discussion, you wanted to be able to dedicate, you know, a fair amount of time, an hour and a half, such, if we could find the time. And, and I think the best way to do that is just to do that in a, in a special meeting. And so this, this action would set that meeting up for, what is it, October the?
Fourth.
Fourth, so I don't have it in front.
At nine o'clock.
October the fourth, at normal time. So, and, and your action would set that, and then it'll, you know, we'll publish the agenda and all of what we normally do.
Okay, we get a motion, set that meeting?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clark. Can we get a second?
Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
Yep, October 4th.
Is that a second, Lee?
What?
Is that a second?
No, it is, I guess.
Motion and second, set the special meeting of October 4th at 9:00 AM. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, thank you. We'll, we'll establish that meeting. The second item is to approve the use of ARPA funding in the amount of $510,000 on three projects. As you know, we were awarded over $31 million in ARPA, and you've committed, at this time, enough, what, $24.7 million of that, leaving $6.5 million left. As you know, the bulk of those funds are committed to our broadband project, which, just as a reminder, we should have, we should have, hopefully, we'll have results of our two grant applications here coming up. I would guess in October for those border-to-border grant applications. And then you had a fair amount, quite a bit in highway, and, and then a number of, that I would call, human services types of programs. But these three today, one is, is to allocate $200,000 to the emergency assistance program, and that is a program administered by our human services department for, to help people with various needs, rent and utilities and those kinds of things. And, and that fund is depleted, and, and actually, we, I believe we used, it was either CARES Act or these dollars to replenish that fund in, in the past, too. So $200,000, that would hopefully take that, that fund to the end of, end of the year, so we can serve everybody that's making those requests. The second one is, is, is a project by the Soil and Water Conservation, and that's a water improvement project in the Stony Creek area up in the northeast part of the county. And clean water was a, a, a highlight of eligible activities in the ARPA, in the ARP Act. And if we want more information, and then you have in your packet on that, we do have someone here from Soil and Water that can speak further on that project. And then we have, the last one is to employ another mental health worker to be a coresponder with our law enforcement. As you know, we, we've approved two of those that are in the metro area, one for our, for our, our own sheriff's office, and this would be a second one in the sheriff's office. This one would not be a company, or not, the first time around, we obviously hired a deputy. This would, this would not be the case here. This, this model is going to be, the, the mental health worker were to have a vehicle and be able to respond to, co-respond with, with law enforcement at the appropriate times. And, and we do have sheriff's office representation here, if you want more information than what is in the packet on that, too. So we can, we can stand for questions if you have more.
Anyone have a question on, any of the three items on there? I just had one maybe for the, the soil and water. I'm assuming that's a livestock facility that just needs assistance with maybe a minor storage facility?
Yeah.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, I'm Mark LaFay with the Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District. And that's, that's correct, Commissioner, that it's a waste storage facility near Stony Creek.
Yeah, because I know in RCS, the funding for a lot of those programs has been way short over the years.
Yes, we've had a backlog of unfunded applications, and hopefully, we can, with some of these funds, we'll leverage some other state funds that we have in that same watershed area. And we just received another grant last week that our board meeting, who is meeting right now, should approve for another $240,000 that we can leverage against this project, so.
Okay. That's Brockway Township?
Yes, that would be in Brockway, yep.
Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, one question for you, and then actually one for Dr. Williams. So it, this certainly fits within what our ARP was originally intended, and it sounds like it's a project that could make a difference from a water quality standpoint for quite a lot of people. It also essentially is an additional amount of money going to our Soil and Water Conservation District for this year. And I didn't know whether or not that meant that, at least from the budget standpoint, we should also be reflecting that while this is coming from those funds, that we are doing an increased allocation. And I guess along with it, do you have other ones that we should anticipate coming forward? And that's actually wasn't my question for you, but you can answer that one, too.
The, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, you know, part, part of, part of this, you know, realizing this is one project, but the hope was that it kind of jumpstarts and, and leads into more projects. So I'm not so sure that we'll have a request for more ARP for this project, although this is quite eligible. Of course, the operating budget is outside of this.
Right.
Of course, we did, we did, in the preliminary budget, we're recommending, actually recommending less than what was requested by the Soil and Water Conservation District. But it's certainly a conversation we can have with, with them, too.
And they're maybe right.
It's kind of a disconnected, I think, two budgets. This would be sort of a capital.
But something for us to be aware of.
Definitely to be aware of.
The needs are huge, I mean, you all do such great work, and you work hard to leverage funds that really make a difference, whether it's for our ag producers, the residents on shoreland, which then makes a difference for everybody, you know, or other projects. So I, I could see that you may decide there's additional projects, and just kind of, how would you go about determining what, which kinds of things would come back to us through ARP?
Well, maybe I was misunderstanding. There might be, maybe there's something within, within their current budget that we could fund with ARP, is maybe what you're asking, too.
I actually was trying to figure out both how ARP relates. When do we decide, when, when do you bring to us which things would be coming out of ARP versus not? There may be, you know, this is our, this is theoretically money that can be both for some basic needs, but really transformational work, which is, to me, where the broadband comes in, right? That's going to make a huge difference for a whole lot of people. I think what you're trying to do here will make a difference, but from a budget and the just ARP, like how, how do we best think about that? And, and then how are both Soil and Water, as well as Administration, thinking about which things get funded out of what? And then for us to remember when we're looking at the operating budget, that there, we are trying to leverage other funds, which you're doing in this case.
If, if I might comment, so these, this request would be flowed through directly to the landowner, so we would not be using any of those for administrative.
And then, I, I don't know if you have other projects that might be similar in nature, that you might be back while we still have these resources?
We, we do. However, with USDA, they, they received a bunch of funds, we think. There's a big barrel that some of those funds was, they haven't shown up yet, I don't think. So we're waiting to know, to see if we can get our environmental equality incentive program, our, our main funding source for these kinds of projects. More funds with the Inflation Reduction Act, I guess, is where most of those will be coming. It's backfilling current farm bill funding.
Okay, and then obviously the next farm, so yes, so there's, Mr. Chair, it appears there's an array of funds, and how are we making this all go as far as possible?
And Mr. Chair, just in response to that, Commissioner, I, we had, frankly, we had quite a few applications from Soil and Water to do these types of projects. And we have a committee, an internal committee that reviews these. And we actually said no to many of them, and, and communicated back with Dennis that, you know, the only way that we think we should fund something like this, if it has a broad impact, if it's a project that's really impacting, you know, significant waterway like Mississippi that provides drinking water, that kind of thing, rather than a more, you know, more, what's a better term here? But so, so that's how we looked at it, and, and actually, we've been having these conversations with Dennis for months.
Right.
And finally landed on this, that, that felt like it was a project that was large enough and impactful enough to fund with ARP. And also, hopefully, it's going to have some spin-off benefits and get some more projects like this funded.
Thank you, and Mr. Chair and Dr. Williams, I really appreciate you saying, helping us and then the public better understand. Because when I first saw this, I thought, I obviously am a big advocate and supporter of the work so, through, done through Soil and Water Conservation, but it did seem a little bit more like what we might, what might often be done with the operational budget, or through it, not through us, with your own budget. But this does impact a bunch, a lot of people, and as we're starting on the watersheds, the St. Cloud, Mississippi, and then the Sartell, Mississippi, you could tell that these are, these are things that can really make a difference in the water quality. So I appreciate, thank you, thank you for that clarification. And then my, my other one actually is, question is for you, not Soil and Water Conservation related.
Thanks, Mark.
It actually, thank you, it has to do with the coresponder, the need, what is better, how do we better assess what the need with coresponder model is? I got a chance to talk with Dan, and certainly I support this particular proposal. And at the same time, we, after having several different conversations with some of our internal leadership, it doesn't seem like we've got a great handle on what the actual need is and where. So it'd be really helpful, I don't know if it's the Mental Health Center, if it's something that's done with one of our other, you know, community initiatives that could come back to us so that we know if there's something else. I think probably like other board members, I think about what happens in two years when this funding goes away, but it, and I know legislation is out there, that's a possibility. Some of this could be billed back through insurance, which could be that a sustainable funding source. So instead of us having one jurisdiction coming to us with a request, like what is our real need out there so that we can make sure that we're addressing it while we have this opportunity? So I do support this, I want to be clear about that, but.
Yeah, no, I'm, thank you.
I would like to know what else, what is the actual broader need?
Yeah, and I think, you know, anecdotally, we're hearing that there's the need, and, and that they're having an impact, and we have some data, but definitely, you know, we haven't been doing this probably long enough to generate really good data for you to monitor and, and make sure that we're making a good expenditure and making people's lives better. But we do need to do that, and, and recognizably, and, and we are, as you've said, concerned about when the funding runs out. You know, the Mental Health Center is, has said that they, they think they can have a way to build, build some of this back in a way which would be greatly helpful. But we do need to be thinking about, and we are thinking about, how do we fund this when the funding runs out? And some of it was, you know, and some of this is more short-lived, and when you approved funding, you know, we didn't get people in place right away. And in today's job market, it's hard to find people, and so we've only been at this in some of those areas for months.
Right, thank you.
And, and that Central Minnesota Mental Health one would actually be funding their staff member for two years, so they'd probably have to figure out how to.
Absolutely, but let's face it, we don't generally want to be utilizing these kinds of funds for staff unless there's a plan, whoever staff it is, unless we have some idea about. staff unless there's a plan, whoever staff it is, unless we have some idea about where it's going. So I know it's their, you know, on the one hand, it's their budget and their problem. On the other hand, we are already seeing some really good outcomes.
Yeah, because they have the statistics in there too.
Yeah. So, and I think this is going to be used a little bit differently what we've seen before. And that's to me partially where what's the plan, what's the need? How do we really better together know what, how to build for the future so that it can be done in a sustainable way?
Any further comments? Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Sometimes we're a quiet bunch.
Yeah. Commissioner Clark, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. And lastly, I believe we're going to go over to preliminary budget.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. You had a sneak peek at the budget at your last meeting, but we spent most of the time on performance indicators. We have our budget committee here, Mr. Hamus, Mr. Schreipels and Ms. Uch here to help out. As you know, this process starts pretty early in the year. We begin our discussions with department directors in May, and we have budget proposals come into us by the end of June. And then the budget committee interacts with, with department directors and appropriate staff to come to at least the preliminary, preliminary budget so that, so that you can adopt the preliminary budget and levy before the end of September, which is your statutory responsibility. If you wouldn't do that, we would revert back to what our levy was last year, I guess is really what happens there. So here we are in September, you'll have this, this meeting to get some detail on the budget and then next meeting to have further discussion and then adopt the preliminary levy at your, at your next meeting, the last meeting in September. So, and then, and then you have time before the end of the year that you can make changes to the budget and make changes to the levy, but you cannot go increase the levy above what you adopt in September. You'll hold your, your truth and taxation meeting in the end of November. And then we, we have one meeting scheduled in December, and so it would be hopefully that you would adopt the final budget at that time. We do have another meeting towards the end of December, if necessary, that we could go to. So that's the process. As we pull this budget together, we keep a number of things in mind. Of course, we keep in mind our, our, our mission, which is a safe, healthy, vibrant county for all. And then we also, of course, keep our values of professional, approachable, responsive, collaborative and fair and equitable. And you saw that entwined in our performance measures and also entwined in our, in our budget when we pull the budget together. The other thing that we keep in mind is our, is our, kind of what we call our levy, budget and levy initiatives. Of course, we want to prepare a budget that's acceptable to you in the end. We want to keep the catch, tax rate as, as low as possible, and we don't want to do things that aren't, that, that we can't sustain into the future. And so we keep, we keep those in mind. We also review some of the fees at least every year. And this year, as you know, we reviewed a department that has a lot of fees, the Environmental Services. And you took action on those fees at your last meeting as well. And so those are built into this budget and they actually fund another person as well. And you'll see that a little bit in the, in the, in the future of this presentation. You'll also see a little bit about debt, and we're trying to keep that debt levy at least consistent and not drop that because of our looming or pending large project, jail project, justice center project. And we don't want to see a, a large spike in the, in the tax rate when that time comes. And there's more about that in later in this, in the presentation as well. Technology, last year, we, the board approved the use of the project fund mostly up to, it was nearly $5 million. And if you add in some other technology funding, we have a lot of technology initiatives going on right now. They were funded this year, but they're obviously going to carry over into 2023. You see there that the digital government strategy and roadmap that kind of came out of our strategic planning, we are about to select a new IT director. And so that, that should be able to move forward in, in coming months soon, in 2023, when we make those decisions too. And then in organizational, we talk about adequately funding things, particularly in human services. Talk about working with our legislators and you hear a little bit about that later on too, how some of that went and that's impacting, impacting this, this budget. And then our mental health efforts, you heard lots of that today with the corespanal moderator and our JCAT team, things like that, that we're trying to be more proactive in those areas and make an impact on those people's lives and our future budgets as well. So what you're going to see is a, is a budget that has a pretty significant increase in expenditures, much of that attributed to road construction, actually about $7 million more dollars in road construction and actually a pretty good increase in the highway, road and fund, road and bridge maintenance area too. And so that's making up a good part of that. And then a decrease in our, our use of the project fund, as we, as I just said, we used $5 million of that last year. And we're not, we're not going to use near that much fund balance this year. And so those two are big, big chunks that are impacting how, how the numbers fall out here. And if you look at levy expenditures, and you kind of see there that as we talked, we talked about, when we talked about the sales tax a couple of meetings ago, whenever we did that, you know, we, we looked at how, there's a lot of variables that impact the levy. And, you know, in this year, you can see that in, we've got pretty significant increases in road construction and even in the highway operating and maintenance budget, but, but not necessarily needing a large increase in, in the levy there. You see the bulk of the increases is in the general fund. And you've got a couple of higher percentages there, but those are much smaller dollars. Pretty, there's not a huge amount of changes in, in some of these other, other areas. I can tell you that in the, the county program aid had the tax bill that was, that everybody thought was going to be passed. Instead of a $333 million less in, in CPA, we would have had about a million dollars more in CPA. So it, so that, that's a significant, was a significant swing in, in, in dollars there. And then you can see the significance of some of the other highway construction revenues and, but really there's, there's, there's not a, not a whole lot of major changes other than those areas I've already highlighted.
Dr. Williams, in actual percentage, what would, do we know, what would that have changed?
It would, it would be about a percent, about a percent.
About 1%.
And I think, I think in my, in my overall memo, I have that number, but you know, about 800, about $900,000 is a percent. So it, it's probably a little more than a percent, actually, that swing. So instead of 4.3, it probably would have been 3.2 or 1 or something like that.
Okay.
And then, then this slide, and this is all, you know, in, in the budget book, shows some of the increases are, are shows, shows the increase compared to previous years. And basically, and you're going to hear in the rest, I mean, we have cost of personnel, you know, we have all those, all of our, we know what those costs are going to be next year because we came to agreements with all of our unions with the 2, 2%, 2%. That is a significant amount of what you're seeing here for an increase. And then, and then as we're all feeling inflation is, is, is causing costs to go up in, in a number of various fuel, food in the jail, all kinds of different, all kinds of different increases that, that general inflation is, is causing us to look at in 2023. We're seeing gas prices come down a little bit from when we actually created this budget. So we're watching that, because that might have a, you know, not a huge impact, but could have a, somewhat of an impact if, if fuel prices aren't, aren't as high as when we actually created this budget. So we're watching things like that too. So when you finally adopt the budget, we've got a realistic budget. And with that broad introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Steve to take you through a few more slides. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Steve Hamus, the Assistant County Administrator. So next slide, few slides will get a little bit more into the nitty gritty of the budget. And just starting off with, again, looking at county, county levies for the past few years, not just Stearns County, but both the MICA counties and a few of the selected counties that are regional centers around the state. So you can see that, again, depending on the year, Stearns County has tried to be right about the average of, of what the MICA counties are at. Some years were a little low, some years were a little high, but not ever at, at the extremes. You can see in 2022, there were several counties that had levy increases of over 5%. There were a couple of counties that had managed to, to do a zero. And again, the average last year was 3.7. And so last year, Stearns County was a bit above average. But again, the past couple of years before that, we were below average. And again, this is just again, a trend to show you that we again try to do our best to keep the levy where it needs to be for getting the operations complete. Looking at, you know, the, the changes in spending from one year to the next, again, this is a tree map chart, looking at the total increase in, in spending by fund. And you can see the largest increases in spending in 2023 will be in the highway department. The gray box being the road construction program itself, which is at 7.7 million. And then road and bridge fund, which is operations and maintenance going up 1.5 million. The general fund and the human services fund in contrast are each going to go up $2.1 million each next year. Looking at the, the budget compared to last year by spending type, as Mike indicated, we have settled contracts for 2023. And so those costs are, are fixed in the, in the budget at 4.3%. The services part of the budget is the area that's going up the fastest at 12% and it's got the largest dollar increase. And again, that is where all of our contracts for services are. So that's the road construction program. That's where our IT contracts are. That's where our service agreements for contracts are for, for IT services. It's where the contracts for jail services, the food and contract, all of the vendors and human services, all of those contracts live there. And inflation is taking a hit on those. Whenever we have contracts that are coming up, the increases are much higher than they have been in the last several years. And so that is an impact on, on our service and supply line, or services line. Supplies are, again, are just the nut and bolt supplies to keep operations going. Those we've held steady, again, as we've been able to streamline operations as best we can the past couple of years. And as Mike indicated, we're having less spending on capital outlay in 2023. 2022 was the big year with that, again, $5 million in technology spending out of the project fund. And that was all capital outlay funding. And so that's a decrease there of almost half. Again, the 3.6 million accounts for our, our planned technology spend for 2023, as well as our purchase of vehicles for highway and the sheriff's office. And so that's what that number accounts for. And so that overall gives us a, a spending increase of five, 4.5% for 2023. Looking at where we started is again, we head on a slide farther back, looking at the difference between the 22 budget, what everyone asked for as part of their budget request and what the budget committee is bringing forward today. It's a, a difference of almost $4 million. Again, there's no way that the budget committee or the board can just rubber stamp or agree to everything that all the departments want. It would be fantastic if that world existed, but I've, I've never seen it. So again, if we look at the differences in what the budget committee was able to cut, we cut 2.7 million out of the personnel requests. There were 17 requests for personnel for 2023, several in the sheriff's office, in veteran services, in property services, and we just weren't able to accommodate all of that based on, again, inflation and the, the budget issues that the county is facing in other areas. We also cut, again, where we could, issues around services. Again, this is, it's not just contract, it's also areas like, you know, phone expenses, postage, printing, publishing, advertising, all of those functions too. So again, we take a fine tooth comb and run through the departments to eliminate money wherever we think we can justify cutting it. The same thing with supplies, cutting out supplies so that it's relatively the same as last year. And again, even though we were significantly less in capital outlay requests, still cutting back on some of those capital outlay requests for, for departments, parks, highway and such. And so again, that's a total reduction in, in expenditures of almost $4 million from what was requested by, by everybody. Looking at the, the main drivers of what's left in the budget, you can see again that the highway construction plan for the year is the biggest driver in the budget for next year by going up again, 7.7 million dollars, followed by the, the contract costs of $4 million. I'm not going to read through every single one of these, but I just want to point out a couple that, you know, will be of interest to the public or to the, or to the board. So you see there that the highway maintenance services and charges, again, that's, you know, again, operations, that's fuel increases, again, as Mike alluded to before, that we're planning for next year in the highway department. It's increased engineering costs for contracts. It's increasing their operations. Again, in IT, we have a $400,000 increase in technology spending. A lot of that, again, is due to the increased cost of service agreements, the yearly, annual contracts just to maintain all the software that we have. Those prices go up on a regular basis of about 10% per year. That was before inflation took hold and those numbers are accelerating. We have on there as well, again, the sheriff's vehicle increase. We did have the board talk about that at the last meeting. And again, there's an issue with supply chain, that the lead time on buying vehicles is extended like 18 months out. And with the age of our fleet and needing to make sure we keep everything as stable as possible and maintaining the sheriff's fleet, we've had to increase our costs there. Highway operations, again, that's, you know, inflationary costs on fuel, on salt, sand, bituminous. Mike alluded to the fact that the jail contract for food, we're looking at a hefty increase in the range of 15% for that contract. So that is going up. But there is, as you see on the slide, some good news, some budget drivers that are actually going the other direction. 23 is a non-election year, and so we were able to reduce our costs in the election area by over $600,000. As you'll see and hear from the auditor's staff here, we'll have a reduction in our bond payments for next year, again, as we look forward to plan what we're going to do with the Justice Center. And again, we're, we're not having that $5 million in spending on technology that we had in 22. So those line items alone account for $7.2 million of budget driver change, and that's, you know, about 90% of the total $8 million in increased costs for, for next year. So getting into some particular, so again, personnel line items, again, departments asked for about 17 staff total for next year, and that would have increased the budget by about another, you know, million dollars alone just on those new hires, not counting all the increased costs and overtime in other areas that, that departments asked for. The ones that the budget committee is recommending for approval by the board are all levy neutral. One of them, the top one on the, on the list is from environmental services, and that one will be funded by the fee increases that the board approved at your last meeting. And then all of the remaining ones are social workers and human services that will be paid for through state and federal revenue reimbursements for providing service. And so all of those will be levy neutral as well.
If I could just interrupt Steve for a minute, though, you, the two positions that you approved today, one of them is in the budget. We made the decision to recommend two very recently, so it's not included in this budget. So you add that one in, then you have one more, and we'll, we'll make that change as, as the year goes along here.
We, because it was just made a change in the last day or two, we didn't, you know, the book is already set, so we didn't want to confuse anyone with the numbers there. So again, as we go forward, we'll revise the budget numbers and.
Yeah, it's still non-levy, as Andy just said, yeah. And it's actually noted in, I realize you all probably haven't read the executive summary. It is noted in, in there that, that what I just said too.
Okay. Then outside agencies is another category that we, again, the county either by statute is required to or can support outside agencies for funding requests. Again, the ones on the top of the list are memberships, where the county has a membership to the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation in the Downtown Council. We are also legislatively authorized to provide money to the Initiative Foundation, the Convention Visitors Bureau, the Agricultural Society, or the County Fair, and the History Museum, and Soil and Water. And then we are in a joint powers agreement with both. And then we are in a joint powers agreement with both the Central Minnesota Radio Board and the Regional Library, where we provide whatever funding the joint powers agreement and that Board stipulates is their budget request for the year. So you can see, again, that, again, all of these agencies make requests, the Budget Committee reviews them and tweaks them to the extent that the Budget Committee feels is the appropriate value. And so, again, this list has been ongoing for years, and you can see that we have zeroed out the Humane Society because they have a contract with the Sheriff's Office, and we will streamline that funding through that contract. Again, technology spending, again, I pointed out that, again, this list is showing what we spent that $4.9 million on in 2022. The reason I included it is these are massive, large projects that are multi-year in their scope. And so these projects are continuing, and so all of the IT projects that are on the deck now for '23 are not nearly as big or massive as this scope. These are still projects that IT will be spending a lot of time on in 2023 to get off the ground. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
He's calling the shots on the technology spending. You don't have a department head. What are you, yeah, I mean, granted, you're not incapable, but what are you using for guidance on the tech spending? Or isn't that nearly as big a problem because it's so specialized, you're letting department heads have more input? Give me some ideas of how you're handling that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, that it's the same process we've used for many years. Departments, you know, submit proposals for projects to IT. IT reviews them, packages together the ones that they think they can accomplish during the year, because, again, everyone has a wish list of things that they'd like to do. And again, there's only so much money, only so much manpower, and only so much time in any given year. And so IT has to figure out, again, what departmental priorities are, what resource restrictions they have, to put together a package that they bring to the Budget Committee for review. And then IT reviews that with the Budget Committee, and we give them guidelines in terms of how much we can afford, and that's how that's done. Yes, this is a year where George McClure has retired, but we have, you know, someone out of class in the department leading that department at this time, and that went as smoothly this year as it has in the past.
Actually, George was still here when we, at the beginning of the budget process, and our interim director is also the person that is most integrably involved in developing that part of the budget. So it went fine.
When we get items by Commissioners, I'll be asking what you're looking for for department heads.
Okay, all right, moving on. So again, that last slide was looking at the giant projects that are involved in IT. And again, one of the reasons I wanted to highlight them is, again, the price tag involved, $3 million for the software to run the Sheriff's Department, $1 million to run the HR payroll system, and so on and so forth. And that leads right into, again, as I've said a few times, the amount that we spend on service agreements. We're no different than any other company, any other jurisdiction, the fact that in order to work more efficiently, more effectively, and provide better service, we are, you know, bound to use more and more technology over time. The upside of that is we are able to provide better service to our citizens and our customers. The downside is technology is expensive. It's expensive in the original price tag to purchase and install a system, and it's increasingly expensive in the year-over-year cost of maintaining the software system. So we have a slide here that just shows the increase of costs in the service agreement line item itself. And you can see in the last five years, this line item has risen by 45%. This is not normal of many other line items in anywhere in the county. But this is something that, again, we strive to maintain, and we work with IT to review, you know, which service agreements do we need, and how do we best control costs? There aren't a lot of great answers, but it's, again, an area that I think Commissioners should be aware of as we continue to become more tech savvy in the future.
It's a real paradox, because as the cost of technology allegedly goes down, the needs are going up, or the opportunities for better service are going up. So it's one of those fields that you're damned if you do and damned if you don't.
Certainly, and it's not as if we could go back to giving everyone a typewriter and a stenopad and saying we're going to provide services the way we did in 1980. The number of staff that we'd have to hire to make anything like that viable would eclipse that cost pretty quickly. Moving on then, I want to touch base on, again, the road construction program. Again, we're moving up to $32 million next year. That's, I think, the biggest road construction program we've had in my tenure with the county. And again, just a breakdown of the funding sources for that is that, you know, 7.5 million will be coming from the quarter cent sales tax that the county has, 2.9 million is coming from the wheelage tax, and 2.3 million is coming from the county levy. And then you see we have federal aid coming in at $5 million and state aid of 6. So just to keep that in everyone's agenda, and this is a year that Jody will be very busy with her crew to do a lot of road projects. And with that, I will turn it over to our Finance Director.
All right, good morning. We just have one slide here, quick, about the debt service expenses compared to the levy. This is something that we'll be visiting with you again shortly as we talk about the Justice Center jail project. But I wanted to show graphically what's happening with the levy versus what's been happening with our current debt payments. So the last couple of years, we've had quite a few bond issues fall off, and now in 2023, we're only down to one outstanding bond that we pay about $800,000 a year on, and that goes out till 2031. But we are expecting sometime in the near future to be issuing a large bond to help finance a new facility. So that's why we're trying to keep, you'll see the levy right now, that line is above the payments, meaning we're saving that fund so that when we get to a large debt issuance, we don't have to increase the levy so much in any one given year for debt. We will spend a lot of time on that later, I'm sure. Use of fund balance, this budget does have some use of fund balance within it. We did some of these things last year as well to try to keep the levy as steady as we can. We've put some of the capital purchases as being funded by fund balance rather than using the levy for that. We do have $500,000 for Human Services operations, meaning we don't have specific expenses identified, but just knowing that their operational budget needed to be higher than what we were wanting to increase the levy, so we kept that $500,000 in there. The final two, the big road project ones, we keep talking about the highway construction. So the sales tax and the wheelage tax that we've previously collected, we had an abundance of that, and so Jody is spending some of those previously earned revenues that she has on road projects here within the next year. Where we're at in fund balance, so we can take snapshots in time, and we just completed our 2021 audit just this last couple of weeks, and we have about $87 million in our fund balance, our unrestricted fund balance, meaning it's at our discretion to spend, it is not locked up by state statute or another program. And when I capture that number, I capture it in our four main operating funds, so your general, your road and bridge, human services, and parks. And I'm comparing that to what the budgeted expenses are that we have in front of you, and we're at about 48.7% of fund balance, or of expenses in fund balance, if I can say that right. And that's healthy. State Audit recommends we be between 35% and 50%, and so we're on the high end of that, which is why we are looking to use some fund balance. So if you use that, and I just talked about the use of 10.4 million, that gets to a fund balance of 76.5 million, which is still 42.8% of expenses, or healthy. Randy's going to talk a little bit about the property tax impact.
Thank you. So county tax rates, again, will decrease this year, and it is a significant decrease. So the tax rate is your levy divided by tax capacity. Tax capacity generally is your market value. So the market value went up 18.5%, which is a really large increase, larger than we've seen since I've been here, so. Where your property tax dollars go, the general government is 47%, but of that, or of the total, 31% is the Sheriff's Office. So most of the general government is the Sheriff's Office. And of course, Human Services, Roads and Bridge, and so on from there, so. The new tax base, Commissioner Murgan, this is a slide I think that you were looking for. So we have 254 million of new construction. That includes, you know, new homes, a couple of TIF districts have been decertified, so that adds to our base, and then a little bit in utilities also. So the tax on that new base is a 1.3 million, which makes up about 35% of the increase that we're seeing in the levy. So this is a little more information on the tax base itself. It shows that residential homesteads up 21%. That'll probably increase more as we go through the year, as more people apply for homestead. The residential non-homestead will decrease and the homestead will increase. So you're looking at the residential homestead and seasonal rec are the two big increases. I think to note, commercial industrial did not go up very much, so this will cause that tax shift where the residential properties will pay more, commercial industrial will pay less, and we'll see that in the future slides. So this slide goes over, assumes you have your levy increase, but the property values stay the same. So this is not representing reality, this is just showing what the tax rate change will do. So everybody would go down 11%. So just kind of gives you a perspective there, what the tax rate would do. This next one is to represent more average, what people will see. This assumes a 4.33% levy increase, and the property value increases that we're showing on average. So residential homestead, that would be the 21% increase. Ag homestead, almost 12%. Commercial industrial, lower 3%, and seasonal rec, 23%. So you can see that the residential and the seasonal rec are seeing big increases, and the commercial industrial is actually seeing a decrease. So that's that shift that we talked about. This next one is to show that the levy, if you did a 0% levy increase, but you had your average increases, what would do. So even at a 0% levy increase, residential is still going to see a significant increase in their value, and commercial, and everybody else will go down. So certainly levy is an important part and will make an effect, but this year, the market value change is a bigger effect. For the homestead properties, it's a little more complicated, and this is an area that we talked about last year and talked to our legislators about. So as the market value goes up, you know, the third column is the change in your taxes because of market value. The second one is you lose the homestead exclusion. So at 76,000 a value, the homestead exclusion is just over 30,000, and then it goes down until you get to about $412,000. So that hasn't changed for 10 years now. And one of the things we were telling the legislators is it's time to change that. They need to give more, they need to adjust that formula. And so that's what's catching a lot of people adding to their increase. And then the third column, or the next column over, is the change in your tax rate. So a tax rate's going down, that causes your, what you pay to go down. But this year, of course, the market value will be a bigger factor. So, you know, what was in the tax bill was a change to those issues. It was also adding some property tax refund increases, and of course, the county program aid. All those three have significant impacts on what people are paying. So I don't know that it's too late to have a tax bill, but that had a big effect on what people are going to see this year.
Mr. Chair.
Randy, then, if they would have an emergency special session within the next month or so, would that impact those amounts, or is it too late?
Well, they can make it effective whenever they want. You know, it's getting a little late for the truth and taxation notices, but, you know, the actual tax bills, we don't calculate until, you know, February, so there would be time there, yes.
Okay. Going back to that point, Commissioner Persky, you ask, and it would be, the increase would be 3% rather than 4.3.
Okay.
And that's just with CPA. There was other monies, like, well, some of the property tax relief for individual properties, but there was other provisions, you know, in other areas that would even have provided a little more revenue in other areas, but this is the most significant one.
But we wouldn't be able to make those corrections if there was a special session, yeah?
Well, yeah, I mean, it all depends.
Yeah, you know, I think if they made it effective, you know, the TNTs would probably be, someone would have to do different, but the tax statements, certainly, we'd have time to adjust those. And in Stearns County, and Jeff and myself, has made this aware to the legislators early on. So this was known, and these numbers are not surprising. So this was something they knew was coming, and they had time to make adjustments, and they did not, so.
And the CPA, we would just, yeah, that would be easy to administer, that would be, if we got the money, it would come off the levy.
Okay.
I mean, the shift in property, and, you know, there's little shifts every year, right? But this is huge. That one slide that shows that we did nothing, the residential's are going to have a 12% increase, and the other ones have a little bit of a, well, significant decreases, so we've never seen. Well, if Randy said he's never seen, I'm going to call it unprecedented. So, yeah. So it's a significant change, and as Randy said, we were, and counties in general, were quite vocal about it, and this was understood during the session. Commissioner Murgan?
Yeah, I think several years ago, we did see that type of thing the opposite way, where ag prices were going skyrocketing, and a lot of shit went toward ag and came out of residential.
Yeah, yeah. And ag has some credits and some help, too, but you're right, it was a couple of years ago, ag properties did go up and down a lot, yes.
And so we'll conclude here, those first two sentences maybe don't go together very well. It's sustainable, but then we really, we know we couldn't, for example, use a half a million dollars to fund human services from fund balance. But it's a healthy balance, and we wouldn't be recommending that if we were too concerned about it. The debt services, you'll read in the executive summary, you know, it's quite a bit higher than what we would need to pay our debt today, but we think it's the prudent thing to do is leave that levy high, accumulate some into that fund, and avoid a spike in the near future. And as we were just talking about, if the state had a special session and adopted that tax bill, we'd look better, but they can always do things that make things worse as well, because we interact with them on so many things. So the final tally here, and you know, you've already seen it, is we do have a 4.5% increase in expenditures, and that translates to a 4.3% increase in the levy, which, as we've just described, the tax raise is actually going to drop significantly because of the significant raise in the property tax valuation total county. And so the next steps are, as you all know, but I'll restate it for anybody that might be listening, is by the end of the month, the Board needs to adopt that preliminary property tax levy and budget, and then we have time until you hold your truth and taxation meeting, which I think is the 29th of November, and then you have one more meeting where you would adopt that final budget. We can answer questions.
How much is in the debt fund? How much is accumulated already, roughly?
If we keep, if we keep the budget as proposed for 2023, at the end of 2023, we'd have about 9 million in there.
Okay.
Which is, depending on what we do for financing, is less than one year's payment on the new debt, depending on what financing we choose.
Okay.
Just a little information on that. So one of the financial plans is to look at doing the sales tax, right? And if we kept the levy where it is and had a quarter percent sales tax, we could build a significant facility without raising the levy. Now, if you want, I think where they're at now is a little larger than that, but, you know, if you do a sales tax, you do have to get legislative approval, and then it does have to go to the voters. So your message is a lot easier that you're not going to see much of a levy increase or at all by doing this, so.
I suppose a big factor is the City of St. Cloud's looking at their own, correct? So it just compounds.
And Randy, that quarter percent would be similar then to the Highway Fund, it would be about 7.5 million a year?
Yeah, we're probably over 8 million, I think, a year.
Okay.
And, you know, the debt service, depending on where we land, you know, anywhere from 12, 13 to 14 million, you know, just depending on what.
And then how much has the current increases in interest rates affected this budget?
Well, I think inflation has affected it a lot. I don't know interest rates, you know, we're not issuing the debt right now. I will say this budget has a I will say this budget has a bunch of risk in it. Because there is inflation happening and we try to do the best to address it. I don't know that we addressed all of it, so.
But I will say we have taken advantage though of getting some lower interest refinancing in the past.
Yeah, we did a bunch of that, sometimes, you know, two times on one issue, yes.
Commissioner Clark.
Yeah, just a couple of things, I know that you pointed out, Dr. Williams, about what the legislature and you too, Randy, about what the legislature could have done but didn't do, is related to both CPA and the property tax updates. They still could come back in a special session, so I know that you brought up about what you all have done. I know all of us have been talking to legislators. They still could do that, I know they're not likely to, but it is an election year and people might want to consider that they've got a lot of people who are impacted by work they did not get done. And that just means everybody really does need to come together to do that. Or it's not as good, but the next piece will be us all working on this again this next year. And occasionally, not often, they do do some retroactive work. I don't think that will help with the property tax payments, but there may be some other things. And then the whole question about sales tax, Mr. Chair, you were just bringing up what other jurisdictions are looking at doing potentially. I mean, obviously, anything we would do and that our voters would approve would add to that sales tax. At least that's less, it's a burden that is borne by more people, which could be good. But it is something, and Commissioner Persky, you brought up the quarter percent. I know Randy's been checking other numbers too, different percentages. Because one of the things is, is by, depending upon the period of time, a future board will be looking at doing this all over again. And so I really appreciate what Sarah, Randy, Steve and others are doing to help look at what can be the possibilities about how we do this, really important and yet definitely major cost item.
Just a question I had, so like in highway, you know, all the facilities have fuel storage. Do they contract fuel ever? Or just fill up when it's empty with a vendor and?
I don't remember the details of the contracts. I mean, we do do a, you know, re-up a contract every few years as required by statute, just to make sure we have the best deal. But I can't tell you if it's a fixed rate based on a certain point or just whatever, whenever the tank is empty. I can find that answer and send it to you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, well, thanks for the update and more to come next meeting. Okay, is that all you have, Mike?
Yes, sir.
All right. Our next item is issues by Commissioners, Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Yeah, the, we have dealt with issues involving campgrounds in the past. When we do, we just specifically consider the matter relating to the campground. What sometimes we forget is that in cases where there is, what, semi-permanent structures involved in the campground, in other words, trailers with wheels on them, but they typically aren't moved out, is that our regulations impact them as well. So I recently had a discussion with someone who, he hasn't moved his trailer in years, but the septic, our septic regulation impacts his system. And he brought that to my attention, so I, we're not going to solve it with this chat here, but we need to hold that thought going forward. And much beyond that, that'll wrap things up for me.
Commissioner Mergen.
I just have a question and I have my own update. I just wondering, question for Mike, if you have any, received anything new considering a major party involvement with our nonpartisan county election?
I have none.
Okay. My, I have received, been given a name by a person at this time yet remains, wants to be anonymous. And I'm going to honor that until the point where I would get at least two more of those types of things where they want to remain anonymous, see if it's the same person. Otherwise, I'm going to try and still find something in writing, that's my ultimate goal. Thank you.
Commissioner Persky.
Just a couple of things with the budget, I know, setting it and then having the option to reduce it. A couple of people have, you know, had come in with sincerity, you know, we really take a look and if we can reduce that, we do make an effort to reduce that if that's possible. And then the other thing is, again, Randy, I want to applaud you on your presentation today about addressing the issues related to elections. I know, you know, across the nation, you know, our process is being under attack. I think maybe an undermining of our democracy by some pseudo patriots. And I just want to say, we, you know, we appreciate the people in Sterns County and the job that they've done in the past, so thank you.
Commissioner Clark.
Really appreciate all the information today. Hope the public takes us seriously about responses, ideas, input, feedback that relates to the budget. We obviously have the AMC policy meeting this week and to the extent everybody's able to be there. There's so much in play that needs to be done for this next legislative session. So hopefully we'll be able to get a number of those things done. And I know that in the Health and Human Services Committee, we've got Melissa Huberty and Nick are coming to do a presentation. So if anybody's around and you want to stop by and learn more about Haikuti, you are welcome to do so.
All right. I don't really have anything, so I guess with that, we can call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.